Perfect, thank you. Okay, sorry, we're a few minutes late, everybody. We're gonna call to order tonight's meeting of the Township of Bernards zoning board of adjustment. The first item on the agenda is the flag salute, so if you can stand, please stand with us.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirement of the open public meeting law, notice of this meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building in Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. It was also mailed to the Bernardsville News in Whippany, New Jersey, the Courier News in Bridgewater, New Jersey, and it was also filed with the township clerk all on January 9th of this year, and it was mailed electronically to all those people who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no new cases heard tonight after 10:00 PM and no new testimony heard after 10:30 PM tonight. Ms. Lehman, can you do a roll call for us?
Sure, Chairwoman Janier.
Here.
Ms. Baumann.
Here.
Ms. Padici.
Here.
Ms. Paktar.
Here.
Ms. Silver.
Here.
Ms. Trav.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Schla.
Here.
For the record, Ms. Lehman is present. I'm Chairwoman Janier.
Great, thank you. I think we had a few people who expressed that they were not able to make it tonight.
Ms. Lehman and Mr. Kraus.
I'll move that they'd be excused.
Thank you, Ms. Padici.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the approval of resolutions that were circulated in advance of tonight's meeting. Oh, the first one was minutes. Sorry, thank you, Ms. Lehman. The first one is the approval of minutes from our September 3rd, 2025 regular session meeting. Does anyone have any comments or edits on those minutes? Or a motion to approve as drafted?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Padici. And... That's an all-in-favor vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Good, we're good. Now, we're up to the approval of resolutions. The first one was Madden, ZB 25016. Any comments or edits on that resolution? Or a motion to approve as drafted?
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Okay, here, Ms. Paktar.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Baumann.
The only one not eligible to vote on the resolutions, all three, are Ms. Trav. Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Chairwoman Janier.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next resolution is 6B, which was Ross, ZB 25020. Comments, edits, or motions on that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Chairwoman Janier.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 6C, Chaturaj, ZB 25018. Comments, edits, or motions on that resolution? Please.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Padici.
Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Chairwoman Janier.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then the last resolution was our resolution adopting the 2024 Zoning Board of Adjustment Annual Report and Recommendations.
Madam Chair, that's a deja vu all over again.
It is.
But we had a little mishap with the voting, but everyone is qualified to vote this evening. So, motion seconded, roll call vote. Hopefully, it'll turn out equally.
Yeah, second times the charm. Fair play, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Yes, I'll give that one to Ms. Paktar, because that's only bad. Thank you.
Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Trav.
Yes.
Chairwoman Janier.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have this for you, Ms. Lehman, I just don't want to forget to give you. Next on the agenda is the completeness in public hearing for 7A, Chowdhury, ZB 25014.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think this is on. The...I did have an opportunity to review the notice for this matter, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified, mailed, and published, both on July 17. That was at least 10 days prior to the August 6 original hearing date, at which time we carried that this matter without further notice to September 3. And then, on September 3, we again carried the matter without further notice to this evening, October 8. So, the Board continues to have jurisdiction to hear and decide the matter this evening. And I turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Chowdhury, we made it.
Yes, good, thank you. Well, Mr. Since you will be appearing and you have any witnesses?
Yes, we have an architect, Frede Smalley, who will be testifying as well regarding the details.
Okay, and I'm gonna swear you both in with the Chair's permission, as well as our Board professionals, if you'll all raise your right hand, please. Do all four of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, all four. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And just for the Board, I think there were updated plans, I just want to make sure that everybody's looking at the most recent set of plans, because I believe there were several changes since the original set went in. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, do you want to tell us why you're here tonight?
Well, Madam Chairman and members of the Board, my name is Mohammed Ali Chowdhury. I currently reside at 177 West Oak Street, where I moved about three years ago. But I've lived in town more than 48 and a half years, and have decided that this is my home. And I wish to improve this house so that it could be used by me, by my children, and my grandchildren. So, in the process of reviewing the previous application, I was lucky to have another architect look at the proposals, and with the suggestions that were made, I decided to make some changes. And I'm now before you to seek two variances. One would be regarding the lot coverage, and the other one would be the front yard setback. Now, the details of the measurements and the plans and everything are going to be addressed by the architect, rather than me trying to do it all. I'd rather have the professionals handle that part of it. I would just like to say that it is my desire to comply with all of the requirements, and in fact, you notice that we have, I've taken aggressive steps to reduce the coverage. And the new coverage that's shown on the survey, we decided to do the survey to make sure that you have the latest information that you can rely upon from a professional. And so, the reason for the lot coverage over the 20% really goes back to a number of factors, because my lot is such that, you know, we have a side entrance driveway, and that usually requires more space, more coverage. We also have a slope, you know, sloping of the lot itself, and that meant that you really couldn't put a driveway from the end, you know, to reduce the coverage from the front, because it would require huge retaining walls and so forth. It's almost like an eight-foot drop from the top to the bottom, and therefore...
I'm sorry, from the top of the driveway to the bottom of the driveway?
No, from the top of my lot.
Top of the lot.
From the lot to the bottom of the, you know, to my next-door neighbor, yes. So, that says as one of the reasons. And I know that this is a very busy road, and you don't want to be able to back, you don't want to be backing out of the street, you want to be able to come out easily to be able to make a U-turn and easily access the road. The traffic has increased, in fact, the planning, our master plan notes the need for, and has had discussions, discusses about circulation plans, and even possibly proposing a traffic signal at West Oak Street and Marty Road. So, for safety reasons, you know, as I said, you know, that additional coverage is required. I would be happy to answer any question that you have for me, but I would like to rely on my architect to answer the questions on a technical basis. But I would like to share something with you. I did some research while we were preparing for this meeting, and I wanted to note the point that this street obviously has very many different types of homes, built over many, many different years. So, you have a very diverse housing stock, with different characteristics and so forth. And we also did some research on finding out, you know, the frontage and so forth. So, I had summarized that in a couple of spreadsheets, if I could share them with you, without going into the detail. I'll give them to you if you have any questions, we'll be glad to talk about that. The point of that was to just show that there are a number of homes that are non-conforming because of, you know, when they were built and, you know, what the conditions were at the time, and even in fact, you know, because the zoning didn't change until 1937. So, since then, a number of changes in the zoning took place, and in fact, I know a number of the changes, significant changes, were made in 2006. And I must admit that I was on the Township Committee at the time, and I must have voted for that. So, but that's desirable, in the sense that our community has grown, our population has grown from, you know, very small number to about 27,000 people now. And therefore, we need to accommodate the needs for the people who want to have a high quality of life and safe conditions, you know, to live. So, if I may, I would like to just share this with you. I have a copy for each member, and also for the professionals. And I also have a copy of the display that my architect is gonna use, which will be the technical side of it.
So, maybe if you could, if you could give one to our Board Secretary, so she can mark the official copies.
That's true.
And, Mr. Chowdhury, Dr. Chowdhury.
And the second one?
Yes, we just want to know which one, we're gonna have one, Exhibit A1. How many do you have altogether?
I have three.
Three.
One exhibit is the, two spreadsheets.
Okay, is that this?
Yeah, we have it, yes.
You have to have a lot of, a good copy.
Yeah.
The, it's a two-page?
It's a two-page.
Okay, and would you like us to mark that A1?
A1, okay.
Okay, and then...
And the second exhibit is actually a printout of the exhibit that the architect is gonna use, but I want to make a larger copy for your committee, so that...
So, that would be Exhibit A2?
Yeah, Exhibit 2.
Okay, so we only have two, because the first one's a two-page, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now, okay, one, two, three. Yeah, three, yeah, thank you so much.
This is the second page?
And if the Board Secretary get one of the A2s?
Yes, I do.
We can pass them down, so you can keep going.
Sure, okay. So, as you will see in this summary, there are only two key points to make. One is that, you know, given when the houses were built and what the zoning requirements were at the time, the setbacks vary, and we find that several of the homes, you know, have non-conforming conditions. So, I am requesting a small variance in the setback, and as I said, the technical details will be addressed by the architect. So, it is not unusual. The other point is that the improvements I'm trying to make to the house, it was a Cape Cod for a long time, and I used to actually rent it to people. So, about three years ago, after my wife had passed away and I had to move from the other house, I decided to use this as my residence. And now, for long-term living, I felt it was important for me to make it suitable for my grandchildren and children to be able to use it as well. So, I've added some features to it, which I think will add to the housing stock in terms of the quality for what we wish to have in this town, and have space for my use and for my family. So, as I said, the technical detail will be discussed by the architect. But before he comes, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Sure, thank you. Did you talk to any of your neighbors about the...
Yes.
Variances that you're seeking and...
Absolutely, yes, I went door-to-door to everyone, and...
Did you hear any concerns?
I know of no concern that anyone expressed, you know, what I was requesting for the... Now, there is a small change, by the way, in the setback, only because initially I wanted to move the wall on the first floor, but my architect said, "That's not a good idea." So, it's better for you to leave it as is, so instead of that 14-inch move of the wall of the front, on the first floor, we are only seeking variance. On the second floor, there is an intrusion into the setback. So, that's encroachment into the setback, and that's what the variance is for. So, as I said, none of the neighbors expressed any concerns that I am aware of, yeah. And I went not only on Oak Street, but also on William Street as well.
And I think you had earlier mentioned that there was an eight-foot, you think, differential between the slope of your property from high to low? Do you have any water problems currently?
No, we do not. As a matter of fact, I've taken quite a few steps to actually control the water, water flow. We have two seepits, pits that I have put in, one to take the roof drain for almost a quarter of the roof, and the other one is, you know, further down toward the end of the property. And I, the water that comes in from the, right behind my house, it can go into the driveway and go into the seepage drain. And that's about a six-by-six-by-three feet, at least, at least three feet deep that takes. So, that's how we are trying to control, you know, the flow of the water. I've also added, you know, more of a, like a drain in the, at the very top of the lot, and it is swale, so the water is directed to the front, going out to the street.
Do we have, I'm sorry, is it doctor or mister?
Doctor Ali Chowdhury, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I happen to be a PhD economist, I'm not a, not a medicine...
I'm sorry.
I have a Juris Doctorate, so they call me Steve.
Please call me Ali, that's fine.
That's the best we can call you.
That's how everybody... That's how everybody in town knows me as Ali, and that Ali is fine, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Doctor is good. Are there additional questions? We may ask you more questions.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to come back anytime.
Let me just see if there's any questions at this time.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is the garage newly added, or was that part of the original footprint?
Garage was there in the original footprint, yes.
Original footprint?
Yes, yes.
So, the addition that you're putting on is over?
Is on top of the garage, yes, correct.
I see that it has started already. When did you start the...
We got the permit, actually. Originally, when I didn't feel I needed a variance, I wasn't very, you know, doing anything, so when I got a permit, and I mentioned that permit in my previous application is 2004, 0404, I believe is the number, and so under which we started the work. And then, we, as I said, discussing these options about whether I move the front wall or do something different, we decided to sort of put a pause on it. And so, they built the framing over the first floor, along the first floor over the garage, and started building the deck, but they didn't finish it. So, we decided we wait until this meeting, get the okay for everything, including the lot coverage and everything else that's involved, so that we can go full speed ahead, and hopefully before the winter, we can at least put a roof on, yes.
So, the addition over the garage, is that part of the setback issue, or is it...
No, no, setback is only the front. And it's actually on the second floor, right? Only, the front yard setback is only the... We have no issue on the side yard setbacks, yeah.
Garage steps back from the front?
Correct, yes.
And Mr. Schla, you agree that the permits that you have currently, he has permits currently?
He has permits to do... To add the second floor on top of the existing first floor, because that's all conforming within the setbacks.
Right.
The issue, the front yard setback here is now, he wants to bump out the forwardmost facade an extra two feet, which will line up with the, with a portion of the facade of the first floor, which is non-conforming pre-existing. But that extra two feet bump out, it's like two feet by about fifty-some feet wide, will extend over the front yard setback. And that is what, that's the variance related to the building.
So, if I understand, if I may, so I understand correctly, Dave, then... Because the first floor was a pre-existing setback deviation, no variance required, correct? But, once he moved in, the second floor at two feet, that was, created the need for the deviation, even though it is setback less, I'm sorry, it is setback more than the front stoop, but it's still within the 40-foot minimum setback required.
Right, the entire front stoop is non-conforming within the setback, and then a portion of the...
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing legally grandfathered non-conforming. A portion of the first floor is in the setback. The permit that he has under construction now...
Go straight up.
Does not come all the way out to that wall.
Correct, right.
The first floor that's in the setback. Now, he wants to bring that second floor to the same point as the first floor, which is an extra two feet, and that puts it in the front yard.
And if I may add, the reason for doing that, and upon some advice from my architects, was that I wanted the house in the front to look more straight, rather than going in and out. There's a section that sticks out, and then you have setback, and then my next section also is setback, actually, almost 15, 20 feet. So, I wanted at least the main part of the house, where the front door is, to be nice and straight, because I've added stone to beautify the, you know, the front, which many homes on that street actually have also. And so, that was the main reason for doing that. And it does give me a better space on the second floor, the size, the width of the room allows me to actually have a more meaningful space on the second floor. So, that was the advantage of it, yeah.
So, the first floor of the house is two feet in the setback, is that...
A portion of it is two feet.
How my grandfather...
It would have been 14 inches, I believe, was the number that I first...
The front, the house is projected in, right, the house is projected in the front, two wings have set back, there's a front projection.
Correct.
That front projection is stepped. Part of that front projection is about 40 feet, part of that front projection is about 38 feet.
Right, 38, right.
A small portion of the projection is 38 feet back. So, he's just bringing the rest of that front projection even.
So, the worst case is two feet.
Right, right.
Just the math was there.
Right.
And I know you made some other changes, and we're only looking at your new changes, but I did see that the amount of maximum lot coverage from your initial request is actually lower...
Yes.
In this one. Can you describe what constituted that change?
Well, we, we had a walkway in the back from my patio, I reduced the size of the patio in the back, and I took out the walk completely, and just left the steps so that you could just go from the, you know, grass to the, to the, you know, walk on the grass. And also, I took portion of my driveway out to make sure that, you know, I could get as close as possible to 20%, but I made it out only about 20.2104. And one of the considerations is that what it does not show right now is, for example, if I put a generator, or if a future owner may want to add a generator, read a pad for that. So, something like that, I'm willing to add a few more feet, if you would allow me to, to, you know, go maybe 21 and a half percent, or 21 and a quarter percent, whatever that is. So, just give me a little more room so that that can be done without having to come back to the Board. That's one consideration.
I think part of it is that they got a new survey, so I think they were giving it their best guess early on. Now, they've got an actual survey, which identifies everything, so there's...
Right.
A certainty to it now that there wasn't.
Yeah. And I noticed Mr. Quinn's comment, that I have to make a commitment, that whatever you approve, I have to live by, and I will.
He makes that to everyone.
I can guarantee that.
You're special, but everybody's special. Everybody gets their cautionary tale from Mr. Quinn.
Right.
Appreciate it.
So if I can, you did mention about putting possibly a generator, you need a pad for that. Do you have central air that that pipe is going to be some?
Actually, my, at this point, my inclination is to follow an example where, we had another project where I worked and I used split units, instead of using a big, you know. I really personally don't feel comfortable with hot air, to be honest, because of the dustiness that comes. So I felt, let's see if we could do something with, you know, these split units. And I believe there are very efficient split units that we can use. So that's part of my plan is to do that, so not requiring a generator. So the generator might be something that would be required. So for example, one of the things I'm thinking of is doing a shingle, shingles with solar characteristics. Like I say, Tesla sells a shingle roofs. They have a backup battery instead of a generator. So that's one of the considerations that we are considering. And these shingles actually pretty much exactly the whole house will be like uniform. The, in fact, the roof in the front, you will see in the south, would be very uniform. There'll be one section setback with the garage and the one on the right also, but in the center will all be the same. And it gives us enough, I think, for that. So I'm looking at all those options.
Two things, the mini split and the generator, two different things. The mini split usually don't require pads, because they're not an AC pad. They're usually elevated, because they throw condensate air and they freeze in the winter time, which they create heat. So they usually don't require pads.
Right, right, right.
But a generator is something.
What is the generator pad? Is that like six by six? What is that, you know?
It depends, it could be.
Will our architect know what the pad is for a generator?
I would think four by six. Before it's the size of house, I think about four by six.
Four by six.
Yeah.
Do you want to amend your application to ask to?
I would be willing to amend that, yes, please.
Can I also ask, just so that you're making sure you're getting the right coverage?
Sure.
The one-foot block wall that you have in the back, did that count towards?
There's the retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yes.
That is included, I believe, in the coverage.
That is included in your coverage?
Yes, yeah, he, yeah, he checked it carefully, yes.
Okay. Do you, any other questions for Dr. Chowdhury, or should we hear from the architect?
Thank you.
Oh, yes, let's do that. Are there, are there any questions for Dr. Chowdhury? He may be back up at this time by the public. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, my name is Fareed Ismailov. I'm a registered architect. My business address is 224 West 35th Street, New York, New York, 1001. And I live in Burnsville.
And do you have a license, are you a licensed architect with good standing in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And what, just, have you ever testified as an expert before, either before, as an architect, either before a board, land dispute in the state of New Jersey, or in court in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, in Dover.
In York?
Dover.
I'm sorry, no, my bad. Okay, and zoning board or planning board? You don't have a zoning board, do you? That's okay, it's not a test.
Zoning, zoning.
Zoning board, okay.
For use variance for.
Oh, that's okay.
Record shop.
What was the court then?
That, the record shop in Dover, that they sell used records, the vinyls, I forgot the name.
That's okay, that would be too much of us to ask of you.
Okay, well, yes, we'll, we'll accept you as an expert in architecture.
You can proceed with both factual and expert testimony.
So.
Please leave the mic or, just wait to bring it with you.
With regard to the front setback.
Yes.
The portion of the building here, which is one-third of the center of the front facade, that is setback at 38 feet. The remaining portion, which is maybe 20 feet, is still not at 40 feet, it's 14 inches in. That is as is, as built, I mean, existing condition. Now, what we're trying to do is, number one, add a second floor above the, because.
Can we have the drawing? I want to put the elevation.
Yeah, that would be helpful. He's going to put it up on the screen for us, okay.
If you can put the existing elevation on the screen, so everybody can see. You get to use all our fancy stuff.
And I just want to be clear, when you're saying it's 14 inches in, you're meaning, you're, you're saying it's 14 inches short of 40 feet?
No, it's 14 inches beyond the 38 feet, so it will be eight inches shy of 40-foot setback. So the, the entire front facade is non-compliant, as is. In the previous application, they wanted to move the, the first floor 14 inches in, that has now been abandoned because of, you know, you'd need a new foundation wall for that, and nobody's doing that. It's only the overhang above the first floor, 20-foot portion of the facade, that's going to align with the rest of the front facade. And there's a number of reasons for that. Number one is, we can't put a canopy in, you can't put anything to shield the front door from weather. So if you have heavy rain or snow or whatever, you can't really enter at a flat, completely flat front, you know, where the entrance door is. So you want some kind of cover, and since it's already non-compliant, you can't put anything in front of it. That's one reason, at least he'll have 14 inches. I mean, he's a very skinny person, so he can fit under it. That's one reason. Second reason, I have solar shingles on my house. It is the best thing invented since sliced bread, because it looks beautiful, and it works, and it's made by Tesla. His house is perfectly located for, between, you know, sunrise and sunset, to have a vast area of the new roof, since he's redoing the roof, to be covered by that. Now, for that, having a stepped roof is more complicated. It would be very good if it was one line, and it's much easier to install those, that they look like a shingle roof, the shingles are a little bigger, and they're, they're very appealing. So that's one of the things that he's going to consider. We haven't gotten a quote, so he hasn't decided if he's doing it or not, but changing the shapes of the roof from previous application, which had a lot of dormers, into this one straight line, was also partially because of that, because this is facing south. The front of the building is facing south, will get the most sun, that's kind of another reason why, he could have a stepped facade, it would be not appealing, and it would create complications with future solar roof. Would he decide to get that? So that's, that's the second reason. The third reason is, having this extra 14 inches actually works with the rest of the layout on the second floor, by being able to create a small office behind the, what do we call it now, primary bedroom. That kind of also works. If I take that 14 inches away, then I have to change a lot of things. So for, for a number of those reasons, it is a very good idea to have that 14 inches allowed to be built. Now, with regard to the lot coverage, the previous survey, which is 1987.
That?
Just for the record, that, that was a document that was submitted with, previously, more than 10 days in advance of this evening. It doesn't have to be marked as an exhibit. You could just reference, please, the last revised date, I think it might be. Is that September 24, 2025, last revised? Is the date on what you're putting up now, September 24, 2025?
There are two surveys side by side on the cover sheet.
Right.
One of them is 1987 survey, the other one is 2025 survey.
And there is a September date, I think.
Is this C100?
A1.
A1.
Yes. So if you look at those two surveys side by side, it's, it's there as well. But I'm just, for comparison purposes, between these two surveys, there's a lot of things that are not on the 1987 survey. For example, there's no pathway between the steps and the driveway. There's no retaining walls, there's. There's a lot of things missing. So the increase, I, I don't know if they were not there, but I would assume there was some kind of pathway between the driveway and the house, you wouldn't walk in the mud even back then. There was something that just didn't make it onto the survey. So the retaining wall was there. It didn't make it onto the survey back then, because I think back then, they didn't account for retaining walls for lot coverage or for impervious coverage, they didn't make it into those calculations. So the increase that, even if, it, it's much less than 1,000 square feet, it's 500 some, somewhat square feet, but the real increase is probably half of it, if, if there was a pathway on that survey, if there was a retaining wall on that survey. So that's not so much. Now, the new survey, the, the calculations that you have at 21.04% are based on the, the surveyor issued their AutoCAD files to us, and we calculated it based on the AutoCAD software. There is a drawing that shows in color, and there is an exhibit, if you want to. A handout that shows each element in its respective.
Sure. Part of that, bear with me one second, one at a time. I think we're up to A3 now?
Yes, that's correct.
Please give one to engineer as well. It's, it's a larger copy of what you're holding, David.
It's already on the plan.
It's already on the plan. It's already on the plan.
No harm in calling it A3.
So we did not measure anything at the side. I myself didn't measure anything. We based it on the surveyor's AutoCAD file.
Yes, sir.
Since we're, welcome back, I've heard you've ever, I just want to make sure that you get the numbers and the microphone working. So I had a couple of questions, just to make sure that the numbers work out. On your proposed, and these are all added up, I checked them, on your proposed, you've got 1711, which is the old number here. It does, it doesn't seem to include that. Also, I had.
It doesn't seem to include what?
The, he's got, the, in the proposed building footprint area, he's got 1781, and in his chart, he's got 1711. Doesn't seem to, doesn't.
Existing was 1711.
Right.
Proposed is 1711.
No, you've got proposed is 1781. This is what I'm trying to figure out, so you got, this is the number I couldn't square.
No, because the greenhouse is.
No, the greenhouse is separate, it's here. So I, I just want to make sure these numbers are all right, because if I add 64, I still, I don't get 1781. So again, it matters now, because, right? So here now we got the slate walk.
The survey, that is surveyor's number.
All right, you're going to work it all out for me, I'm just going to point out the areas where we want to make sure we get clarification. The slate walkway, it's got 173 here. The drawing shows 130, now this new exhibit shows 145. So.
Because previously, it combined the stair and this in that drawing, and then we've further separated in color-coded categories, so we can, like, this would be the.
So this number, 4208, I'm, I'm, you understand, I'm trying to come up with it, that's all based on this roster, which doesn't match these labels or this. So you, I want to make sure these numbers, if you add up all of these numbers on your labels, you'll get 4208 on this, all of these additional labels will come up to this.
It's only this, this should be.
And you still have 1781 here versus 17.
It is 1711, that's not 1708.
So that's just a typo?
Yes, this, this should be 1711, as shown here, because that's the hatch. It's the same building, nothing changed.
Right, where's your, where's your 19-foot addition? Is that on here?
19 square foot does not add to impervious coverage, it's only on the second floor, and it's already above the existing porch.
Right, but your, your porch is still 80 pre- imposed, are you comfortable with these numbers, are you following along with these numbers?
I think some of the numbers aren't there to represent lot coverage, and there's probably a lot of confusion. They're just there to stay in back, like that second floor number, that probably shouldn't be on this plan. This plan should only, all the numbers that you show individually on the plan should probably sync up with the numbers you have on the list. And for example, that second-story addition number.
Yeah, it shouldn't be there. It's not on the list, makes sense, right, okay, so that's good. So the slate walk number, we've got three different numbers, we're okay that your number 173 is what we're using, not 145, not 130.
Plus 16, plus a portion of that, it was just calculated differently in that table.
Okay, so 171 plus, all right. I mean, it's, I just want to make sure we're comfortable with this number 4208, again, because of the impervious coverage situation. Well, plus, we're going to add 24 to that, I've got 4232 now.
Can I ask you a question now, while you're looking at that?
Yeah.
You have the paved patio in the back that's 332 square feet, and then you have the steps at the patio. Are those steps over top of what's already?
I know, I had that circled too.
Like, should that be counted?
Should it be counted in the, in the existing? Because in existing, it's clearly over.
Yes, because it's, whatever you see in colored hatch, so you see the yellow hatch, that is the number of.
332 square feet, and that 20 square feet is separate for the stair.
So the 330 doesn't include that.
Yes, doesn't include, doesn't include the 20.
But I'm asking if it, if it needs to be in addition. So if the 20 square feet that equals the steps is over top of, the patio already exists?
Yes.
The paved patio already exists, correct?
Yes.
So are the stairs over top of the paved patio?
No.
At least a portion of it. It looks like there are a portion of it.
They are separate, it's a separate.
They're over the block wall and the patio.
They're over the block wall, yeah, is there, is there, is there pavers on?
The fact that you can't have two layers of impervious coverage.
Exactly.
It's either impervious once or, or not.
So the block, so what's underneath the stairs, if that's paved already, and then you have the stairs over top of it?
Do you have pavers under the stair? I don't think there are pavers under the stair.
There are pavers, yeah.
There are pavers.
Where you have the retaining wall coming out of the house from under the kitchen, the kitchen wall?
Yeah, okay.
There's stone on it, and then there are pavers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's covered.
In fact, Miss Panici just pointed out.
And the steps from the deck are the ones that you're looking at.
The steps need to be over pavement.
Right, so what you.
The steps, yeah, from the deck are over pavement.
Right, it's going to be over pavement.
So.
So then it's counted twice, is what, so you don't need to count that 20 square feet, correct?
No, it's, we, we have cut that 20 out of the patio and called it a stair for this schematic, it's counted once. Because otherwise, if I don't count them, I'm just going, the number on the, on the patio would have been 352 instead of 332. Yes.
This is three hundred thirty-two square feet. This is the additional twenty, make this one count.
It would be three fifty-two.
I understand what you're saying. Got it.
I was trying to help you out.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You were talking about the front entry and having a roof like over the entry. Are you planning that? Because that doesn't show on these architectural plans. And that's over, over the porch.
It's just going to be flat.
But it's the reason why you wanted a little bit of bump out for the stairs.
Oh, instead of doing that?
Yeah.
So, that actually, that actually...
The second floor comes over, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, it's just flat with the rest of the house here.
Right.
This is set back fourteen inches.
Sir, for the record, the people, some people will have to follow it. You're pointing to what document, what date, and what page?
A two oh one, nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-five drawings there. It's page seven of seven.
Right, elevations? It looks like elevations.
Proposed elevations.
Okay.
So, proposed south front elevation.
That's fine. Now, explain what you wanted to explain. Please speak directionally so that someone reading it would understand what you're saying. Okay. Okay, wipe this closer. Yeah.
So...
There you go.
In the front, this first-floor portion of the wall, which is about twenty foot wide and eight foot tall, is set back, and that's the original condition. That's how it was built, fourteen inches further from the street than this portion of the wall. This portion of the wall is at thirty-eight feet.
This is the center portion, correct?
This is the center of the house. This kitchen side, the west side, is further set back another eight feet. The garage is further set back more than ten feet beyond the forty-foot line. So, this is the only portion of the house that is in the front setback requirement by two feet here and by eight inches here. And we're keeping the first floor as is, but because we're building a second floor above it, this would also now be in the new non-compliant condition of two feet. And this is going to be the same new non-compliant condition of two feet.
When you say this for here...
Second floor, the second floor south elevation of the proposed new house.
I think what's confusing me is your east side elevation, which is the right side of the house. So, you're looking at the garage, and the front of the house bumps out, and you don't show that step back there.
Yeah, because you can't see, you can't see from...
It's beyond?
You can't see. No, it's just one, it's one line, because the east side of the south elevation, east half, is already there.
So, it's only where you're showing on the front piece where the stone is shown? That's where it's set back, not the whole thing?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Nope, that doesn't show it either. Yeah. This is where you would have seen it. If you go to...
What page is that?
Page six of seven, eight two hundred, existing west elevation. You would see it on the west elevation. How, how the original is. Okay. All right, so, that's there.
I think it also helps to look at the actual pictures of the house itself, because that's where you can actually see more of the... What's bumping out, what's not.
I think I got lost somewhere in the presentation, but are you still requesting the same amount of coverage that's shown in this Form F? That says you're asking for twenty-one point oh four? Did that, did that get increased at some point?
Yeah, I got...
By the generator pad?
I got a little lost.
I got twenty-one point one-six.
Okay, and that was because of that generator request, Janie?
Yes.
Yeah, it was four by six feet, so an additional twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four square feet.
Which I added twenty-one point one-six.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have more testimony, or should we just address some of the comments of Mr. Sly's memo?
Yes, please. I think I'm done.
Did you get a copy of Mr. Sly's memo?
Yes.
Good.
And a copy of Mr. Quinn's memo.
Dave, you want to go to number six and him?
Yeah. Referring to my memo dated October second, twenty twenty-five, the comments one through five are factual. Comment number six having to do with lot coverage, I believe those items have been resolved with exhibit A, two, and three, as we've already gone through that stuff. Number seven, the applicant needs to agree that the proposed deck will remain an open deck, in other words, not covered or walled in or enclosed by any means, because if it was not, it would count as lot coverage and...
Yeah. You have an affirmative stipulation on the record, thank you.
Number eight is a, pretty much a standard condition. The applicant should confirm that any proposed exterior lighting or existing exterior lighting will be directed downward or otherwise shielded, so they glare in direct light, or reflection will not be a nuisance to adjoining properties.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Number nine, do you propose to remove any trees, or have you removed any trees as part of this project?
We've added eight new trees. I don't intend to move any existing trees.
Okay.
Have you removed any already?
No, no.
Okay, then, are there any trees in the work area? I know it's already under construction, but one of the points that I was...
There are no trees.
You've protected any existing trees that require protection.
I've just been adding trumps and green giants all over the place.
And that's fine with me as far as number nine. And number ten, just a correction on the plans on sheet A one hundred, there's a couple scales that are not correct, and the street name is not correct. That should be a simple fix.
It's been fixed on the digital version that you've received, but we didn't have time to...
When their plans come in for a construction permit, just tidy that up.
Yes.
So, you'll agree with it.
The digital version that you have has that already fixed.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was all I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sly. And then, Mr. Quinn, I think you, your comments, we may have addressed already, we did calculations.
I had three, the impervious cover, we talked about ad nauseam, the cover sheet corrections that Dave just mentioned, and just the advisory. I mean, we have an ASBIL, basically, that the surveys and ASBIL show us what, other than the generator now, the property's going to look like, so...
Yeah.
With regard to impervious coverage.
Yeah. So, the impervious coverage, obviously, we spent a lot of time on that, so just be very mindful of all those calculations.
Okay. We'll double-check everything again before we file for permit.
Yeah, they will be corrected in the final document that we submit to the Verity Department.
Yeah.
And just so we're clear, now that we have a full understanding of the plans, the patio and the driveway, that was all there when you purchased the house? Have you added anything?
Well, the patio in the back used to be concrete, old concrete, that was all broken up and everything, so I put pavers. So, that's the difference in that. But everything else is the same, yes. The driveway is there.
Any other questions?
I'm just wondering if there's a need for water, any water quality control, not quality control, but catching, directing?
Well, I mean, again, this, they're two hundred and eight square feet now, two hundred and thirty-two square feet over what their impervious cover would be, so... They're in modern development, their total impervious cover is below the thousand-square-foot threshold, but we normally look to whatever's excess to try to address that. Here, we have very little bit of excess, and it's, they've cut back on it, so I didn't think to comment to make them address it. I noticed, though, that your driveway, you have a drain at the very back edge of that. Where does that go, Olive?
That goes into the seepage pit that I described, it's six by six by three feet deep.
So, they have a seepage pit that's not showing on here? So, they already have some sort of water management already addressed on there.
Yeah.
And again, what they're talking about now, the final numbers are pretty minor in terms of stormwater management, so anything that you have now...
Right.
Will be a benefit.
And your driveway, the way it is now, allows you to back out, so you can come out facing forward?
Yes, it does.
Because it is a tough...
Yeah, just when you see the front of the driveway, I have enough space to be able to go in and then back out and come out facing front.
Yeah, because you can't back out.
Facing the street coming out rather than backing into it. And also coming out of the garage, we haven't left enough room, so from the second garage, for example, I can back out and then come straight out. Yeah, no, it is workable.
And his garage is also set back...
Yes.
About fifty feet away, so that's an extra area that is additional impervious coverage, that wouldn't have, wouldn't have been there if he had a front-facing garage, which...
Yeah, no, he needs it.
But this is much prettier, because it's a side-facing garage, and you don't have two garage doors and, you know, opening into the street.
Did you get a copy of the environmental commission report?
Yes, yes, we did, and I agree with all those.
Do you agree to all the points that are listed there?
Yes, yes, I agree, yeah.
Did you speak to any of your neighbors? Are they in favor of this, or...
As I said, my neighbors are willing to come and support me, but as I said, they have young child, so I look, it's up to you if you want to come. But no, I have not heard any complaints. I literally spoke to everyone except maybe two families on Williams Street that I couldn't find, and no one had any objections.
Okay. Do you have any additional questions at this time from the board or the architect? Are there any questions from the public, based upon the testimony that we heard from the architect? Do you have any questions? Do, are there any comments from the public, if you want to make other for against this application? I don't see any. Do you have anything else for us, or do you want to turn it over to the board at this time? Doctor?
I appreciate the time that you have devoted to this, and I do not really have anything else to add. I would certainly appreciate the approval for the two requests that we are making, so I can get the work done in time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if you wanted, the two-minute tee-up?
Please.
The applicant is seeking two bulk variances, front yard setback thirty-eight feet to the second-floor addition, whereas forty max minimum is required. And the lot coverage is now at twenty-one point sixteen percent requested versus twenty percent maximum permitted. Those are the two variances. All the conditions stipulated to by or on behalf of the applicant were those set forth in the reports of our engineer, our planner, and our environmental commission. I did not have any other stipulated to conditions, nor were any requested. So, it would be a majority four out of six, if I did my math correct.
Yeah, I think that's right. Okay, does anyone want to kick us off here? Any comments for deliberation or motion on this application? Thank you, Ms. Paktar. Thank you.
I would, I would see this as both a C one and a C two variance. I think the C one is because of the slightly undersized lot. C two is the non-conforming location of the existing house, making it difficult to put a second-story addition on it without stepping the addition back. I don't, I think this is, it's going to look beautiful in the neighborhood, it's going to improve the street facade. I'm personally in favor of it, and I would make a motion to approve this application and to, the word's right, and to deem the application complete and direct the board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing the board's decision to grant the relief requested by the applicants, subject to the conditions stipulated by the applicants, including all stipulations and all additional stipulations.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I would second the motion.
Ms. Silver? Yes, that was it.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Okay, Ms. Slaman?
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairman Engineers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck, Dr. Trapp. Okay, our next case is the completeness of public hearing for Namini, hope I'm saying that correctly, ZB two five zero two three. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, please, just give us a second to get all your paperwork done.
Madam Chair, I may, I did have an opportunity to review the content of the notice. Found it to be sufficient, found it to be timely served. The certified mailing was September nineteenth, publication's September twenty-fifth, both at least ten days prior to this evening. So, the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application tonight, and I'll swear in our applicants and our board professionals with your permission. Do you have any other witnesses, other than yourselves?
No.
Okay, no requirement. Please raise your right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So, you're here for a new swimming pool, I see. Is that right?
We are, we are new residents. We purchased a home.
I'm sorry, I do need to get your name and address for the record, even though we can probably guess.
Yep. Sorry. Ashley Namini, my husband.
Troy Namini.
Two ninety-one Douglas Road, Far Hills, New Jersey, zero seven nine three one.
Great. So, you want to tell us why you're here? We have your application in front of us.
Yes.
Well, why don't you tell us?
So, we purchased a home in November of twenty twenty-four with an existing swimming pool that we were made aware was not repairable, damaged, broken. So, in the efforts of safety and recreational use, we wanted to basically replace the existing pool with a new pool. Upon submitting permits to the town, we learned of the ordinance that requires the swimming pool to be behind the adjacent dwelling's rear building line.
We see that.
I heard it's, I heard it's your favorite, favorite ordinance. That's rumor on the street from my research, but, yeah, so there's an existing swimming pool currently. We are making modifications to the size, because it's a fiberglass pool, and we're switching to gunite. So, although the pool volume is increasing, we've worked to decrease the pool deck area, which basically decreases the coverage from eight point three one percent currently to eight point two seven percent. I think the only variance requirement that we have is that one ordinance. Although we're new, we haven't met those neighbors, unfortunately, but they are about two hundred feet from the pool right now. There are, you know, tree line at the property, property line, we have some trees in the, in the pool area.
So, it's about two hundred feet to the west, is that right? Lot fifteen?
It's lot seventeen.
Lot seventeen is about two hundred...
Yeah, so, so to the east, lot seventeen. I believe those neighbors purchased five or six years ago, so the pool was existing when they purchased. I haven't heard from the neighbors that we have been able to meet. I haven't heard any issues. They wished us the best with tonight, said the pool's been there for twenty years, and they hope to get it back up and running so they can come over for a barbecue, so... Yeah, you know, we, we did, our pool contractor couldn't be here tonight, which is why you're stuck with me. But, you know, we did explore, you know, there's existing infrastructure adjacent to the pool, there's a pool house, so, you know, moving the pool location... So, you know, moving the pool location, an additional hundred-seventy-five feet really isn't an option. We're trying to keep the existing fence.
Are you touching the pool house at all? You making any changes to that?
No, no changes. Just the pool deck and the pool. We're keeping the fence line the same, so we're really trying to minimize the impact to the work. Let's see.
Can you just the, can it be seen? Can the pool be seen from either of your neighbors on fifteen or seventeen, do you think?
So fifteen, it cannot be seen. There's like pretty dense property line with trees. Seventeen, we have trees. There's actually an opening in the tree line at the property line. It looks like there's two stumps there, there was trees. So we actually went to a nursery this weekend and we have plans to talk to them. It's our property line, the trees wrong, to replace them, just basically put some new trees there.
Okay, so you agreed to put some degree of screening, some adequate screening, screening?
Correct. We, we're going to put two new trees on the property line where basically there was and at some point with the previous owners, you know, unfortunately, they, they didn't make it. Now, there are two, two and a half trees within the pool fence line, so we did receive the demo permit and the, I'm going to butcher this, the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District not applicable response. So the demo has proceeded, so the pools, the trees that are there are very close to the existing pool. So we brought out an Arboris Tree Company and said, hey, take a look at these things. They said, the chances are these are not going to survive. We said, okay, we will plant arborvitae along the fence line. So basically, the three, two and one smaller one that are there in the pictures that you'll see are going to have to come down, but we're going to replace them. So we'll, we'll basically put something very comparable along that, you know, side of the fence so that it'll mimic what was basically there before.
Okay. This is on the side towards lot fifteen?
Lot seventeen.
Lot seventeen.
Yeah.
And the pictures that are in your application, did you take these?
They're actually the listing photos.
Oh, they're.
Yeah, we got lucky, so I used the listing photos. So I did not take them, but.
Do they represent essentially what the property looks like now?
No, they proceeded with demo once we got the permit because they had an opening. So basically, we've got the silt fence, we've got the construction fence, and we have no fiberglass pool now. And basically, it's subgrade, so it's pretty stoned, the whole entire area, right now.
So the existing pool looks like it's only like eight feet wide.
So, yeah, with fiberglass pools, you're limited because they, they truck them in one piece and a crane offloads it. I would say they're not as commonly installed unless you're trying to install a smaller pool, which is why we're going to move to the gunite.
This looks like a lab pool.
Exactly. We're, we're trying to have a bunch of tiny humans, need a little bit more space than eight feet wide, so.
Did you get a copy of Mr. Sly's memo?
I did.
A quick look at it, make sure we address it.
Did we start with number three? Actually, Mike might have addressed that.
We did address number three.
I think we covered number three.
Yep.
Dave, if I may, Madam Chair, we don't need to have that subject to your review and approval, or do we?
It'd be subject to review and approval, the engineering department.
Put everything on engineering, okay.
I'll be involved in some way.
I'm sure you.
We didn't ask about the lighting, but in his comment, number four, or Ms. Sly, I'm not sure if you want to address your memo, sorry.
Lighting, no, don't be any glare, direct light or reflection.
Yes, so at this point, we don't plan on changing. We have lanterns out there and stuff that's on the pool house. We don't plan on putting any new lighting, other than in the footprint of the pool. But I think, like I said, the trees that we're going to add and the existing tree line would, you know, mitigate any of those potential concerns with the neighbors.
But if you had your work to go, you would ensure that it.
Absolutely.
The lighting is downward directed or otherwise shielded.
Yes.
Thank you.
The comment number five, well, I guess there is a note on the plan that says no trees will be removed. Testimony has corrected that and we went over that, and you have silt fence to keep contractors out of.
Silt fence is attached to the current metal fence that is our pool, permanent pool fence right now. Yep.
Number six, soil erosion set of control measures, that's already been approved.
Yep, yeah, I, I don't know that I included that. I don't know if I had it, but I do have the.
Yeah, they'll ask you for that in the engineering department.
Okay.
And it will be subject to engineering department review. And I know you have a soil erosion set of control plan. It's just that the Soil Conservation District doesn't need to approve it.
Correct.
The engineering department will.
Got it.
And that may, assuming it's an approval, that may appear as a condition of the approval, notwithstanding the fact that you're sort of halfway home on it.
Okay.
And my last comment, number seven, regarding the Environmental Commission's best management practices for pool, water discharge, you read those?
I did, yeah. The pool was empty when we bought the house because it wasn't in use, and, you know, from what I understand, any maintenance that we have to do on our future pool, right, if you have to drain it for repairs, they bring in a temporary facility so that you don't have to pay for another few truckloads of water. You pump it into the temporary blow-up and then they pump it back in the pool. So I, I talked to someone about that.
So to the extent it would apply, you would comply with the Environmental Commission's requirements, if necessary.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sly. And Mr. Quinn?
I just had one comment, and Ashley called me in a panic about it. She was trying to sort it out, what it was. And, and I see this a lot, the limited disturbance, it's very tight to the pool when you back through it, and it, it happens a lot. And you're right under the five-thousand square feet, but he's got it set up for Soil Conservation District to approve. He's got all the notes on it, but I knew what was going to happen is exactly what happened. They said, you're exempt because you're not at the five-thousand square foot. So you're already underway, you've got your exemption. As Dave said, you'll still have to deal with the township, they'll want to do your silt fence and your track and pad and all of that. So jurisdiction will be with the township, not with Soil Conservation District, so.
Got it. We're prepared to do whatever is required.
You can disregard my, my second number on there, it's been addressed.
We'd never do that. We'd never disregard it. Did you get a copy also of the Environmental Commission report?
I did, yes.
Did you have any issue with their comments? I think they had three comments.
I do not. I, I have a call out to my pool contractor just to make sure that he has no issue, but I don't believe we have any issues with complying with those three comments.
If I may, Madam Chair, Tom, the, the recommendation from the Environmental Commission is for current LOI, letter of interpretation on wetlands. Is that, would you have an opinion on that?
I don't know why it's necessary. They, it's, it's an entirely fenced in area. It's already disturbed. I don't really understand the need for it.
It's a recommendation. Would it be your opinion that the recommendation need not be imposed as a condition or stipulated to if the applicant did not want to?
That would be my opinion.
Okay. I'll share, I think that was shared with the board, they'll make their own decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then stormwater best practices and discharge best practices.
Discharge, we talked about that. Are there questions from the board on this application? Are there any questions from the public on the testimony that we've heard? Are there any comments from the public on this application? Do you have anything else for us or you want to turn it over to us at this time?
Oh, we're done. Thank you so much for your time.
If only we attorneys gave such exact summations.
Has to be proportionate.
The, if, I'm sorry, the, I could tee it up, yes. The, well, it's pretty teed up. The, it would be, if it's a motion to grant, I'm going to assume it's a motion to grant the pool location deviation for C-one and possibly even C-two, but certainly for C-one reasons I would imagine, and the conditions would be those stipulated to by the applicant as set forth in the reports of the planner. And the engineer, albeit the engineer's one comment is, is no longer applicable perhaps. And the Environmental Commission's recommendation with respect to stormwater best management practices and the overlap of the best management practices for discharge of pool water, but I'll assume unless I'm told otherwise, that the board is not imposing a condition for a current letter of interpretation for wetlands.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if anybody else has a way. Okay.
Other than that, to the board.
Thank you.
For our section passage.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone want to make any comments or a motion on this application? It's pool location. There you go.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Basically, this is a C-one. The hardship of not being behind the property line, there's nothing you could do really about that, wouldn't make any sense to move it in the back and you'd be in the wetlands anyway, so, and then you really would need to go to the DEV. So I would just deem, move to deem the application complete, and I would ask our board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing the board's decision to approve the application with all of the stipulations put forth tonight with regards to the, the review letters, I'm sorry, I'm a little tired. And stipulated to the, to by the applicants and that's it.
Not certain of motion. Thank you, Ms. Bowman and Ms. Pedici.
I would just say C-two, I mean, I just could say C-two for the sake of argument that there's, there's.
Yeah.
Or keep the resolution really simple and leave it C-one.
Ms. Slaman?
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Trav?
Yes.
Chair of Engineers?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome to town. Looks like a beautiful property. Next on the agenda is Schaefer, ZB two-five-zero-two-two. Just give a second, wrangle out the paperwork, we'll be good to go.
Madam Chair, if I may, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for this application as well. Found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail on September twenty-four, published on September twenty-five, both at least ten days prior to this evening, so the board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. And if I'm not mistaken, I see one witness, I'm going to guess it's the applicant, and we have our board professionals, if all three of you will raise your right hand. Do all three of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. You want to tell us why you're here and what you need our assistance on?
Sure. Well, my name is Eric Schaefer. I'm representing my family that lives at forty-one Ellis Drive. Today, I'm seeking a coverage variance. I am not seeking any alterations to the property whatsoever, so I guess I'll just tell you a story because there's no real technical about, you know, requirements here. I purchased the house in twenty-twenty-two and I had one baby. I now have three, and so we decided we needed more bedrooms, and so we are converting an attic to an additional bedroom and moving the laundry room upstairs. There's no coverage alterations with this project, but when we submit the permit for construction, it was noted that there was a pre-existing overage and that we needed to either remove our front walkway and our rear walkway or come here today and seek a variance. My lot is undersized. It is kind of an awkward position, which we did explore adding just a room onto the back, but that created a whole host of other issues. So that's pretty much the extent of the application. I'm, I purchased the house and it was non-conforming, and so I'm hoping to get approval so that I don't have to rip up my front walkway.
Sorry, so question, you're not building an addition at all, you're just converting the existing attic?
Yes, it is a second.
To add more space.
It is a second-floor conversion, yes. There is no change to the, the footprint.
Right.
At all.
At all.
So you're not adding any coverage, it's just that this was uncovered?
Correct.
It was a pre-existing.
Yes.
Non-conforming, okay.
Correct.
There is an addition, but it's a, it's a vertical addition, correct?
Yes, second floor.
It's not even, it's not even raising the, the height, though, you're saying? You're just converting what's already there?
It will, it will go up, because it was a.
Oh, it will go up, okay, sorry.
The attic was, I don't know the technical terms, but it was like this and we're making it more room size.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, how old is the home?
I think it was in the sixties it was built. Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
I mean, I guess I'm just, you know, sort of like the same idea with the pool, it doesn't make a bill. With properties that have been around for so long or had structures for so long, you're just sort of replacing or, or not doing any more variance, you would?
There was no variance with this property to allow for the overage, that's it.
Maybe Dave can explain, I suspect the, the lot coverage overage did not pre-exist the zoning ordinance for some other reason. It happened without getting approval, so it may be that the board giving this approval now puts their property in essence in conformity, and it may be a benefit to them as well as to any successor owners of the property. But that's just my guess.
That's good. I touch on that in comment number five of my October two twenty-twenty-five memo. Basically, you can see from aerial photography what happened. The prior owners who owned the property prior to the applicants, at various times, added the enlarged driveway, the enlarged front walkway, they added a rear patio and walkway without any permits and without.
Okay.
Any review or without any variance and put the property into its current non-conforming condition that was inherited by the applicant.
And was the, I assume the shed was already there?
Yes. I have made no changes to the property since I purchased it.
And I assume you're using the shed, it's providing some useful purpose for you now?
Correct. Bikes and small RV cars for my kids.
Important. Have you spoken to any of your neighbors about this project?
I've spoken to lot twenty nineteen.
Have you heard any concerns from your neighbors around this project?
No. They were concerned that there was no variance when they put in the papers previously, but yes, nothing, nothing for the construction or for this hearing.
Okay, and had you, when did you say you bought the property?
Twenty-twenty-two.
So since twenty-twenty-two, have you heard any complaints from your neighbors around the existing conditions?
No.
And are there any, do you have any issues with, with water or water coverage from a stormwater perspective?
Not near the property, but there is a small trench that was there when I purchased the house that runs.
There's that.
Two, one, one foot, one or two feet off the street, and it, it catches all the water from the entire neighborhood and continues it down into a river, but it all stays very close to the street, nothing near our house or near any of the papers that currently exist.
So a swell, basically, in the front yard behind the curb line?
I don't know what a swell is, but I called it a trench. It's like a.
Yeah, yeah, just the.
Grassy depression, yes.
And you got a copy of Mr. Sly's memo, right?
Correct.
Do you agree with comment number six?
Is that regarding the lighting?
It's regarding the existing air conditioning unit, which appears to be about nine feet, should be included in the lot coverage calculation?
I would agree, yeah.
Okay, so you, let's see. So I assume you'd like to amend your application to include that nine feet, which would make it nineteen-point-five-nine percent, which is a little bit more than your application asked for to include a nine feet, is that correct?
Sure, yes.
You don't have to.
You've come all this far.
Yeah.
I will do what it takes.
And also, any lighting or any, you should confirm that any existing proposed exterior lighting should be directed downwards, that's standard.
Yes, confirm, all lighting will be pointed at entrances to my house and not above that.
Mr. Sly, any other concerns or comments?
Yeah, number eight in my memo just is a clarification on the plan where, on the plan where it shows the upper deck. Yeah, number eight in my memo just is a clarification on the plan where, on the plan where it shows the upper deck, there's that, I call it a trapezoid area between the deck and the walkway that is a planting area. Correct, it looks like it on the pictures, you know what I'm talking about. If you're on your upper deck looking away from the house
Oh, the, yes, yes, there are shrubs and planting, correct.
And that, that area is, you can't tell from the, it's shaded as if it were patio. But the plan should be revised to reflect that that is a planting area, just to avoid confusion in the future.
If I'm hearing you correctly, that could potentially offset the nine feet from the air conditioning unit?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that it was included, I don't know it was counted as coverage. It's just, I think the shading is extended onto that area and it's graphically incorrect. You can ask your architect to look at that.
Okay.
I don't know that it would change the numbers, but it just needs to be represented that it is not an impervious surface.
Fair, understood.
The other thing I didn't mention in my memo though, the architect did provide an update to the application with the new coverage numbers and the fact that you'll be eliminating the enclosing lattice around the deck.
Yes.
And the plan should also be revised to incorporate the revisions that are mentioned in the architect's letter, the new, the new lot coverage calculations.
Understood.
Okay, so that's, and that when you, I don't know whether you'll have a separate permit to apply for these existing improvements or just update the permit you already have, it's probably more likely you'll submit a plan that reflects all of this and anything else the board may require tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schleid. Mr. Quinn, are there open comments on your?
No, I was confused too about, I had two, two numbers listed for impervious coverage, had one in the plan on the chart and then this letter updated it, so this is the number we're going with.
Correct.
So no, I have nothing further. I would say that the driveway, in terms of drainage, if a lot of the improvements, the driveway, the walkout front, all of that drains towards the street, so it's not apt to have accrued any damage or impact to the existing residents.
Excellent, okay, good.
Madam Chair, if I could ask you a quick question of Mr. Schleid, the, can you give us the date of that architect's letter that you received? Because I don't think we have that.
September 17, 2025.
Thank you. For the resolution, thank you.
And then, Mr. Schaefer, did you get a copy of the environmental commission report? Like this?
Yes.
Do you have any issues with their comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Quinn, do we, the first one, show the limited disturbance to square feet, was that already provided or was that necessary?
No, I, this is a, your opinion, have you started? You haven't started any work here yet?
We have.
Yeah, so do you have, you have a contractor on site, do you have a steel fence up or anything or any area? Technically, they show them a limited disturbance because all of the work is done over the existing house.
Yeah, same for prep.
But there's always a small limited disturbance associated with equipment and materials that are brought on to use buildings. So the township has a threshold of 2,500 square feet. I doubt if you're gonna hit soil conservation district, but do you have any steel fence up there now, anything at all on the property or no?
No.
Well, just beware, the township, if you exceed 2,500 square feet, and I can't say that he is or is not going to, but if he does, you'll have to deal with soil conservation district measures in accordance with township engineering department.
But, but would it be your opinion that the provision of a limited disturbance in square feet now is necessary or not necessary in light of before-mentioned colloquy?
Yeah, I would say if he's already started, it's not necessary now. You're dealing with the township engineering department, have you already dealt with that?
That was part of the initial permit for construction and there was a, they brought this up and they said you couldn't start and then we worked with them to say we will get a variance or we will rip up the papers and then they allowed us.
So the point is, it's now in the jurisdiction of the township engineering department. If they deem that there's gonna be a limited disturbance that requires soil erosion, sediment control, township engineering department will make that.
Will deal with that, so it might not be necessary
Might not be necessary.
For now.
As required.
I drove by the site today and there were a couple of trucks parked in the driveway, but they're not doing anything on the property at all.
Okay, good.
Everything is in the driveway.
It's always just a question and a recommendation, Beth, because sometimes, what happens, I mean, not so much in this case, but the case before this one, where you're close to 5,000 square feet, I've, I've been involved in towns where all of a sudden, you know, the contractor comes in, he starts throwing steel fence up, he starts doing stuff and all of a sudden the engineering department says, it's whole lyming, you gotta get SCD conservation approval. And now people are waiting four weeks to get SCD approved, so I just try to be cognizant of that. You're dealing with the township engineering department, you'll be fine.
Understood.
That might cover number one, thank you, Madam Chair.
That was number one. There's also a comment, yeah, obviously, if you do get an approval, you know, you will continue to be over the impervious coverage number. So we always are mindful, if you do any plantings, to consider native trees or shrubs that, you know, do a better job of absorbing water.
And I did put my comment last week to everybody
Yeah, please do it.
Everybody who's over, just live with the limit you have or else you'll have to be coming back here asking for, you know
Yeah, you should know that better than anybody, so
Yeah, right, right.
You'll find yourself here.
Yes.
Be wary of that when your contractor comes in, says, hey, I got 100 square feet of papers you might wanna hand out.
I was actually told by my architect that variances only last for one year and you must actually
The approval for them, but yeah, that's something you'll deal with the attorney.
And are you removing any trees or you're not, did you need any tree permits?
Not removing anything.
Number five, recommendation, maybe not applicable.
Not applicable, okay, and then their last point was during demolition. We always ask you to consider recycling, repurposing, or gifting any demolition material. Would you agree to consider that?
I'll consider it.
Good answer. Are there additional questions from the board on this application? Any additional questions from the board on this application? Are there any questions from the public? Are there any comments on this application? Okay, do you have anything else from us or you want to turn it over to us?
I have nothing else.
Thank you.
The, it's, I'm gonna assume it's a motion to grant the lot coverage deviation of 19.59%, which includes the air conditioning unit pad over the maximum permitted lot coverage of 18%. That's with all the conditions stipulated too, as set forth in the planner's memo and the engineer's memo, the planner's memo inclusive of the revision pursuant to the updated September 17, 2025 letter from the architect. I dropped my microphone. And, and the stipulated two portions of the September 29 environmental commission memo, which I have as two, three, four, and six. One and five found to be perhaps not applicable or not necessary. So that will be my assumption, if it is a motion to grant, four and a sixth are passage.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who would like to make any comments or make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll redeem myself this time. I would make a motion to deem the application complete and to grant the requested relief. I see this as under C1, it's not self-created as a hardship, you inherited a problem. I don't see this as any detriment, I see it as keeping in character with the neighborhood and I do see it as an advancement of the municipal land use law in that we are creating a better home that's fit for your family and for future residents. So I would also ask our attorney to draft the resolution memorializing the board's decision and subject to all of the conditions that were stipulated to by the applicant and state of deliberations.
Can I just also include C2?
Yes.
Can I do that, can I amend that? Oh, bend it to include C2, because I feel like you could take the shed away if you wanted to. But I feel like because, you know, we haven't heard from any neighbors, it's been like that for some period of time, it doesn't seem to be causing any problems, we haven't had problems with water, I'd be okay with it.
I'll second the motion, I looked at it as if it was a conforming sized lot and lot covered with the 18.27% was a full-size lot. So I don't see any issues with this, so I will second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar. So Ms. Bowman and Ms. Paktar.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Trev?
Yes.
Chairwoman Janir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is 7D, which is the Yan application, ZB 25025. Thank you for waiting patiently.
And Madam Chair, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for this one as well. Found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served. Certified mail, September 24, published September 25, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. I can swear in the applicants and our board professionals, if they'll all raise their right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you all, and back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So good evening, do you want to tell us why you're here, we have your application in front of us and we have reviewed it.
Good evening, everyone, so my name is Shu Yan.
Can I ask you to speak right into that microphone?
Oh, here, okay.
We're taping it as well.
All right, yeah, good evening, my name is Shu Yan and this is my husband, Wei Li. We're here tonight to propose for our addition to the current house. We have a one-story, single-family house, which is, we bought it from the original owners in the night, it was built in 1960s, I believe. And we're proposing to remove the majority of the structure and then add a second level. I may build a new level, first level and add a second level to make it a bigger house due to the need of the space we need for our growing family. We have a third child during the time we, after we bought the house, so we just feel like we have, we need more space. And also, our parents sometimes visit us from Canada, so we do need some extra rooms to accommodate them as well. So that's why we're here. And we do have a few variance requests as listed here, a minimum lot area, a minimum improvable lot area, and minimum lot width, and a minimum front yard setback. That's what we're here for.
Okay, and if I understood it correctly, your application, none of these are changing with the exception of the minimum front yard?
Correct, yeah, the minimum front yard, even, right now, the existing is 74.7. We are not changing that as of the wall setback, but as of the steps, I did talk to Dave about that. The sidewalk, the steps from the front porch will be having like 71.3 feet of the setback instead of the, because of the wall. Right now, we're not bumping the walls more, we're just, because of the stairs, we need to have a little bit more setback.
When did you purchase the property?
In 2016.
So you're living there now?
We live a different house, if you look at our previous, we did, we filed an old, a previous variance application, the 17. Yes, because originally we wanted to, you know, we have that in mind to build a second, it was too still, too small for us. So that's why we built, we had that required, but then we have some family medical emergency and, you know, the plan was just suspended for a few years.
And that was approved at that time?
It was approved at the time, but we didn't proceed.
But Ms. Schleid, that's completely expired too, this is a complete do-over.
Right. Yes, and then we
If I may, Madam, I'll just interrupt the edit, it was, it was approved by resolution August 9, 2017 and the applicant did get an extension.
Mm-hmm, correct, we were hoping, yeah, we were hoping we can
In 2018, taking them through August 9, 2019
Yeah, correct, yeah.
This applies to charm.
We still didn't make it, yeah, it was, yeah, yeah, over time here.
And for the record, and I guess, or at least, I don't think it's inappropriate to edit, that I believe it was a seven to zero unanimous decision, that's factual testimony, reading from the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Did you get a copy of Mr. Schleid's memo?
Yes, I did, and from Mr. Quinn as well.
Excellent, Mr. Schleid, do you mind maybe walking us through your non-factual?
Sure. Looking at my October 2, 2025 memo, one through four are factual, number five is, the applicant touched on, or actually answered the setback to the wall of the building and, and the porch roof, I believe, is going to be the same 74.7 as exists, but they need a couple extra feet for the porch steps.
Right.
And that would be 71.3.
Yes.
So that answers that question.
And then, I'm sorry, so we're, so the front yard setback deviation, can they go to 71.3 feet versus 75 feet required?
Yeah, that, that's the actual front setback, noting that that's only for the steps. The actual wall of the, of the building, including the porch roof, is gonna be at the existing 74.7.
Got it, thank you.
Number six is with regard to
Yeah.
Common topic tonight, the limit of disturbance, which is shown on the plan to be pretty much hugging the structure.
Right.
And I don't know what the magic number is to widen that by, but there needs to be some room to work in there.
Yeah.
And the only, well, one issue would be whether it needs soil conservation district approval or not. The other, more important in my mind would be that it would be further encroaching into regulated slope areas and the applicant would want to be sure that moving that limited disturbance out further can be done while still complying with the steep slope disturbance requirements. And looking at the steep slope analysis that you brought on the plan, it looks like there's plenty of wiggle room there, but it is something that would need to be careful with. Especially the, there's a small area of greater than 25% slopes, which are off limits to disturbance compared to other categories of slopes that you're allowed to disturb a certain amount. So the, the, the limited disturbance wouldn't be able to go into that 25 and greater percent area, but it would, should be, in my opinion, and I'm guessing Mr. Quinn's probably gonna agree, that a little more room is needed than is shown on the plan.
And is that something the applicant understands and can stick going to making those?
Yes, yes, I did talk to the engineering, engineer, Steve Parker about that, yeah. And he said we will definitely revise the, redo the calculation and we also plan to reduce the deck because we put a huge deck in the back and we, you know, never need it that big. And I just talked to the architect, you know, we did, we never wanted that big, he just threw it out, we never gave a thought, you know, oh, why do we need that big, so we're gonna, you know, reduce that huge deck to much smaller, like around 200 square feet of maybe a patio or something instead of a huge, right now, I don't have the number, but it's like 600, 700 square feet, 700 square feet of the huge deck. So we're definitely not gonna do that, so we're gonna by reducing the deck to reducing the disturbance area. And also, Steve, the engineer, will recalculate the boundaries, as right now, there's no work area, workspace, basically. So he understands that, he will redo, based on the new plan, he will redo the calculation to make sure we comply with the 2,500. And if not, we will do the soil erosion permit as required, yeah, definitely.
Number seven, you've heard this before, any exterior lighting that you do
Yes, we will, yeah.
Non-nuisance lighting?
Absolutely.
Number eight, the plan shows no trees to be removed. Number eight, the plan shows no trees to be removed.
Mm-hmm, no trees to be removed.
You'll provide adequate tree protection.
Yes, we will, yeah.
And that was it for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Slade. Mr. Quinn?
Sure, yeah, the first two are just comments. The third one, and this is not an impervious cover issue, they're far from it, but
Yeah.
When I was going through the, the proposed coverage analysis, Steve's got like two-hundred-and-forty-eight dri, square feet of driveway removed, but the amount of addition going in the driveway is like a hundred and eighteen square feet. I couldn't I couldn't square that together. Again, you're, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, you're not gonna have an impervious cover violation, you're not gonna be over the thousand square feet that generates stormwater management, but I think that there's something
Yeah.
Not quite right.
Yes.
You stipulate to have a, Mr. Parker clarified?
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, clarify the
Yeah, definitely.
And, and again, you're far from it, I don't think it'll be an issue, but the building height, the way I saw it, your architect had twenty-seven point eight feet from the finished floor to the highest point of the roof. Steve seems to be using thirty-four feet and just flying that through the plan, so I don't, you're not gonna have, based on what I, you're not gonna have a height variance, but that number is not.
Should be clarified as well, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you. He can also, there's no FEMA issue here, I don't know, this might be a holdover, his note three, it, it's just, it's an, it'll put like township officials on alert, and it's not necessary in this case, there's no flood issue anywhere you're not even close, so that can come off.
Okay.
And then I had the same comment regarding the limited disturbance as Dave did. You'll expand it.
Right.
You may not be the five thousand square feet that requires soil conservation district, but you certainly will be over twenty-five hundred square feet that will require the township
Yes.
Soil conservation.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah.
Um, that's all I have.
And then, did you also get a copy of our township environmental commission?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Did you have a chance to go through their comments?
Yeah, we did, and it's pretty much about the same as we mentioned before.
Some of them are similar.
And we definitely plan to, you know, plan to, to, to put more trees or shrubs around the new built, you know, area in the front and the back. Yeah, native trees, and yeah, I did have the link here, yeah.
And they have a list, if you can look up on the website of what their recommendations are.
Yeah.
There's no additional stormwater, Mr. Quinn, required?
No, no, they're, they're not over the impervious cover, well below any threshold that's a trigger.
Okay, and their comment number five, they did talk about the steep slopes.
Right.
And your thoughts around stabilization for?
Yeah, just by doing more longs, like shrubs, planting shrubs, and maybe containing, retaining walls if needed in any areas. You know, we do plan to do that to, to stabilize the soil.
Okay, have you taken, taken out any tree permits?
No, we didn't, yeah.
Not applicable. They wanted you to be aware for the potential of any in-ground tanks, although I can
No.
Some footprints, and asbestos, and then also, if you'll please consider recycling, repurposing, or gifting of any, the mall
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Are there any comments from the public? Do you have anything else for us?
No, no, that's it. Thank you so much for the time.
Hope this is the last time we see you.
Yes. Hopefully.
To tee it up with the name, Madam Chair, we have, well, actually, oh yeah, lot area variance of point nine nine acres versus one acre minimum required, approval of lot area variance of nine thousand five hundred forty-nine square feet, just shy of the ten thousand square foot minimum required. Lot width is one hundred sixty feet as opposed to two hundred feet minimum required, and the modified front yard setback deviation, the proposed front yard setback is seventy-one point three feet.
Yes.
And as opposed to the minimum required front yard setback of seventy-five feet, if it's a motion to grant, I'll assume it's with all stipulated conditions as were set forth in the three, two, and three reports. And for us, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juan. Or does anyone want to make a motion or comments on this application? Last one of the night.
All right, I'll do it.
Thank you.
I see this, I, I think this is C one variance because of the steep slopes of the property and the, the existing building being where it is and zoning hasn't changed.
And I would assume also the undersized nature of the lot vis-à-vis the lot area, lot width, and improveable lot area. I think the phrase is, it is what it is.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. So I would deem the application complete and direct the board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing the board's decision to grant the relief requested by the applicants, subject to the conditions stipulated.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I'll second.
I missed who, was that Ms. Silver?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bedici.
Yes.
Ms. Bowman.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Trebb.
Yes.
Chairwoman Engineers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck with the review.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is number eight, any comments from members? I guess, Ms. Slade, we're gonna cancel the October sixteenth meeting. And I will say, I am not able to attend the November meeting, so Ms. Bowman has volunteered to chair that one.
Okay, I, I also have an issue with the November meeting.
Okay, so we should check attendance on that one for sure? Yeah, I'm gonna be out of state. Any other comments?
I'm taking that day off, so I'll be able to sleep.
Any comments from staff?
No, thank you.
Good to see everyone.
Yeah, you too. I feel like you should introduce yourself. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?